I'd like to call a meeting of the Planning and Zoning, the special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 3rd to order at this time. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the minutes show, or let the roll call show that all Commissioners except for Commissioner Lacks are present. Next item of business is the approval of the minutes. I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held on September 19th, 2007.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion from Vice Chair DeBrocker and a second from Commissioner Bay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, public comments. If anybody would like to make a comment about any item that is now not on tonight's agenda, you need to, one, fill out a speaker card, and, two, this is the time to come up to the podium and identify yourself and speak your piece, and we will be happy to take it under advisement. Is there any public comments to be made? No, seeing none, thank you. Moving right along. Disclosure of ex parte communications.
None.
None?
None.
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 Commissioner Bay, any ex parte communications?
Just a joke.
Okay. Okay, none. New business. Okay, the first, oh wait, one, two, three. The first several items of business are concerning the general plan amendments, and I'm gonna ask, the first thing I'll do is, these are cases 07-700-00004, 5, 6, and 7, and I'm gonna ask Joe Schmitz, which are Arizona State Land Department major general plan amendments. I'm gonna ask Joe Schmitz to lead us through an overview of each of the cases, and then we will, or, an overview of how the cases are gonna be presented, and then we'll take each individual case and conduct a public hearing. The Commission will do, take no action on these cases at this meeting. All action will be taken at the following meeting in the middle of October, at our next meeting. So, without further ado, Mr. Schmitz, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commission members, good evening, members of the public. Tonight is the first of two public hearings to be held on the major amendments to the general plan that were submitted in 2007. As you noted, a second hearing will be held on October 17th at the Star Point Residence Club in Australia at the regular meeting time of 7:00 PM. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to provide the Commission with a brief overview of the projects and to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on the proposed general plan amendments. As Chairman noted, no action is required of the Commission tonight. At the next public hearing, staff will present its recommendation to the Commission, and the Commission will be asked to make its own recommendation on each of the general plan amendments. What I'm going to cover right now is just an overview of the two amendments, which are basically the first two items on your agenda, the cases 07-700-3 through 7 and 07-700-002. And then, once I give you the overview, I'll turn it over to individual staff members to give you the greater detail.
Okay.
There are two major general plan amendments being considered this year, and they cover 16,400 acres principally in the southern portion of Goodyear, south of the Gila River. The first general plan amendment to be reviewed tonight was filed by the City of Goodyear Community Development Department on behalf of the Arizona State Land Department. The Land Department owns 11,000 acres within the City of Goodyear, and as part of a pre-annexation agreement between the Department and the city that was executed earlier this year related to the Sonoran Valley annexation, the Department agreed for its lands to be annexed into the city if the city would process certain general plan amendments for their property, and that's what we're doing tonight. Land use changes have been proposed on 8,554 acres of the 11,000 acres, and for ease of processing and discussion, the 11,000 acres have been broken down into seven planning areas numbered 1 through 7, running north to south in the following locations. Planning Area 1 is located north of McDowell Road, east of Perryville Road, and it actually consisted of two parcels, where the second one's south of I-10, along Cotton Lane and Van Buren. Parcel 2, Planning Area 2 was basically three parcels that were located in the vicinity of the King Ranch project. Planning Area 3 are two parcels located along Rainbow Valley Road, in the vicinity of Elliott Road. Parcel 4 is a parcel that lies east of Rainbow Valley Road, roughly south of Pecos. Planning Area 5 is located between, just off of Rainbow Valley Road, between Queen Creek Road and Ocotillo Road on the west side. Planning Area 6 is located at the eastern boundary of the city, with the north boundary being Pecos Road and the south boundary being approximately Riggs Road. And Planning Area 7 are two parcels that are located at the far south end of this area, in the vicinity of Hunt Road and Rainbow Valley Road. Of the seven planning areas, it was determined that the, three of the areas didn't require any changes, and so, we're really only gonna focus tonight on the four planning areas that involve changes in land uses from those shown in the general plan. And during the presentation on these areas, which are basically areas, Planning Areas 3, 4, 5, and 6, and this is a little bit larger exhibit of what I just showed you, oops, didn't mean to do that, a little bit better there. What we plan to do is, during the presentation of these planning areas, the planner on the Arizona State Land Department parcels, Brett Burningham, will describe and outline the changes that are proposed for each of the planning areas. The Commission will be given an opportunity to ask questions of staff and the applicant, and then we would ask that the public be given an opportunity to express their comments on that particular planning area, and then, once those comments are concluded, we'll move to the next planning area, so that we can kinda keep things segregated. Also proposed is a general plan amendment for the 7,848 acres located in what was formerly known as Australia Mountain Ranch, and which is now being referred to as Region 3 of Australia, and that's this area that's outlined with the white boundary on this map. Region 3 is the area within Australia that's located south of Queen Creek Road alignment, and extends all the way down to, in the vicinity of Patterson Road on the south. It's actually bordered by three of the Land Department general plan amendments, 4, 5, and, uh, 5, 6, and 7, and, fourth planning area, let me see, I said there was three of the four, I guess that one's not contiguous, I take that back, two of the four, two of the areas are contiguous, and a third is contiguous but has no changes proposed in it. During the presentation of the Australia general plan amendment, planner on that project, Farhad Tabasoli, will outline the proposed changes within that area, and will proceed in the same manner as we had for the state land parcels. So, with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Mr. Burningham, so he can take the planning areas one by one and describe the proposed changes to you.
Two, one, Joe, one, I have one question first, just so. Australia Region 2 is located between the Planning Area 4 and Planning Area 6, is that correct, even though it's not on the map?
That's correct.
Okay. And would the clerk, would the clerk note that Commissioner Lacks has arrived? Thank you. All right. I'm gonna open the public hearing. This is case number 07-700-0004, and this is for the state land planning area number 3. Brett Burningham, you're up.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsner, members of the Commission, members of the public. As Joe had mentioned, there are no changes to Planning Areas 1, 2, and 7, so we move to Planning Area number 3, and as you can see, the, what I've done here is, I've got two exhibits. The first exhibit is, shows the existing, right here is the existing general plan, the one on the right is the proposal that we have. So, there's two parcels, they're located south of the Gila River, east of Rainbow Valley Road, and that proposed 303 corridor, and west of Newlands, Australia. Collectively, 1120 acres, and as you can see in these two different plans here, the land uses were reconfigured to protect natural open space areas and also to ensure land use compatibility with existing adjacent rural residential development. So, the major, the major change, as you can see, the low-density residential in this area here was relocated to this area here, to ensure that the custom areas in the Australia area would have more of a rural residential development adjacent to that. So, that can, that concludes the remarks on Planning Area 3. Staff is available to answer any questions?
Okay. I see one representative from the State Land Association, Ms. Green, is there anybody else? Would you like to make any comments as the ultimate applicant?
No, thank you. We've been working with staff on these amendments.
Okay, okay. Comments, questions from the Commission? Mr. Bay?
Thank you very much, Chairman Gelsner. The only question I really have, Brett, if you don't mind sharing with us, we've obviously changed a little bit of the configuration from, for the purpose of natural open spaces. Could you share with us a little bit about that process with the state, and how that's been, I mean, have they been sort of dictating, or are we kinda working together?
Chairman Gelsner, Commissioner Bay, it's been a joint effort with the state. We have utilized Kevin Kugler and RBF Consulting on our end to, to help us with the land use planning, but we have worked in concert with the State Land Department utilizing Michelle Green as the project manager on this case. So, essentially, it was a very, very, it's been a good process. We've met on each planning area, we've, we've tried to determine as a team what would be the most appropriate land uses for each respective planning area, trying to give the state the land use designations which would translate into the densities that they need, and also, from the city's standpoint, we need to make sure that the land uses are appropriate for the adjacent properties, and, and we think that we have achieved that.
Okay. Let me sort of follow up on that just a little bit. It looks like Area A, at least the southern half of that area, is now all considered basically open space, so is it the intent of the city then to keep that land open, like parks or something of that nature, throughout the process?
Chairman Gelsner, Commissioner Bay, there will be some changes to the exhibits before we proceed to the City Council. Our consultant has helped, has helped us to identify the natural open space areas that we will need to preserve. That, that will occur during the zoning process. The, the city cannot designate any parks or open space areas on private development without the written permission of the private property owner, and, and the state land does own this, this is their, this is their properties. So, the exhibits that you show here in Area A, the green areas show the areas that will need to be preserved in future PAD submittals. So, the, the area surrounding it, rural residential, most of that area will be, will maintain, be maintained in rural residential development if future development applications come in for that.
Thank you. Any questions on this side? Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Laura Tunnell?
Commissioner Lacks?
I'd just like to apologize for my tardiness.
Traffic, I-10, it'll be relieved.
One day.
Just, Brett, just to follow up on Commissioner Bay's question, as long as the average densities in the land meet the state land requirements, the, the state office doesn't have, we've, we've designated, it looks like a wash in this area, we've designated some open space area that obviously due to the terrain wants to be preserved, as, you know, again, as long as the densities, overall densities are met, in this collaborative planning process, we can go forward with what we were proposing, is that correct? Do I understand that correctly?
Chairman Gelsner, members of the Commission, we, yes, you're correct. At the general plan stage, we will maintain the open space configurations that you see on this exhibit. Anything that you see that's green on this exhibit here will, will be able to stay green because that is the existing general plan. We have, our consultant has helped us to identify the areas which we, we now know will need to be preserved through future zoning applications. So, when a preliminary PAD comes before you, you will notice these configurations of open space, and, and at that point, we will look to the, to the applicant to preserve those at the preliminary PAD stage.
Okay. Any other questions of the Commission? Any comments of the public concerning this case? Okay. Since the Commission is not going to make, take any action, I'm gonna close the public hearing on this case, and we are gonna move on to case number 07-700-0005, State Land Planning Area number 4, and I'm gonna open the public hearing, and Brett, you're up again.
Planning Area 4 consists of about 600 acres of property. It's bordering Newlands, Australia, Master Plan Community to the north and east, and other private holdings to the west, near Rainbow Valley Road to the west, and, as you can see, Pecos Road is the boundary to the north, Germaine Road to the south. In terms of land use changes, Planning Area 4, as you can see here, existing general plan, proposed general plan land use, there are a variety of residential land uses. The land uses were revised in an effort to better plan for the 303, that is now, the corridor is shown going through the property, to provide for higher density residential uses on either side of, of that roadway corridor. And also, the commercial parcel has been reconfigured to a more appropriate location adjacent to the major road, roadway networks in the area, excuse me. There is a roadway change that you will note in the proposed exhibit, and this is a minor revision to the circulation plan that was approved with the 2006 general plan amendments. And this figure here shows the arterial roadway at Germaine Road and Cotton, Cotton Lane Alignment. It shows this continuing to the northwest in an effort to connect to Rainbow Valley Road, which would bisect Planning Area 4. The arterial roadway at the Germaine Road alignment is not able to have immediate access to the 303 due to the interchange separation requirements, and staff has determined that this proposed revision provides for improved circulation for the area, and staff recommends approval of this roadway change as well. And this concludes the presentation by staff. Staff can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Bay?
Sorry, Brett, I guess I'm just full of it today. And, when we were really going through this general plan amendment initially for the annexation, there was a lot of plans that were submitted to us, site plans submitted to us, and there was no consistency in the roadway alignments, and, of course, we never heard whether or not that ever got resolved, and so now we're seeing a roadway alignment here. Can you tell us, is this alignment admirable to everyone, all of the developers in the area, owners?
You're referring to the proposed?
Yes.
The proposed change? This is the exhibit that we were referring to that was approved with the 2006 general plan amendments. The area in question is right here.
Yes.
You can see that, that there was no arterial roadway shown in this area. The proposal is to extend that, obviously, to the Rainbow Valley Road extension. The State Land Department owns this entire section here, so the, I mean, the change associated with that request is, is located entirely on, on the state's property.
Okay.
We haven't received any, any negative comments from any of the adjacent developments.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions over here on this side? I have a question, I'm gonna, Mr. Bull? Australia Area 2 is to the east of this parcel, and I understand that they're, based on what's happening in Australia Mountain, Area 3, there will be some subsequent changes to Area 2.
Correct.
Your comments on this area, does, do you have any comments on this, or have you been advised of this plan, and are you working with this, and is this gonna coincide with what you guys are planning on doing?
I think Newland's been in the loop with respect to seeing the plans generally, I don't know, this is Chuck Kubak, who does a lot of planning for Newland, I think he better than I can.
Okay, that's fine. If you could, I'd just invite you to make a comment. If you don't wanna make a comment, you don't have to.
That's fine. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, we've, we've met with the city, including the state representative and, and their consultants on this particular piece of land, and they've received our input, and we were comfortable with the changes that, that they were suggesting.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions of anybody off the Commission? Would anybody from the public like to make a comment concerning this case? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing on this, and commission action will be taken at our next meeting. I'm gonna open up case number 07-700-0006, State Land Planning Area number 5, and I'm gonna open the public hearing, and Brett, you're up again.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsner, members of the Commission. This exhibit may be a little bit more difficult for you to see, proposed general plan, excuse me, existing general plan exhibit here, boundary here, this shows the proposed land use with the boundary here. Planning Area 5 consists of 1,535 acres. As you can see, it's west of Rainbow Valley Road, between Queen Creek Road on the north and Ocotillo Road on the south. The planned Rainbow Ranches Community, which received an approved GPA in 2005, is located to the north, and there is a McCray Holdings parcel located to this, which was approved, general plan amendment approved in 2006, located to the southeast. This parcel is proposed to contain a slightly higher residential land use designations in an effort to make this parcel more compatible with the adjacent development plans in the area. As you can see, the major change is, is the areas shown in rural residential being changed to low-density residential. The only other change is a very small commercial parcel has been designated at this intersection here of Queen Creek and the Jack Rabbit Alignment. There is a roadway change also associated with Planning Area number 5. You'll note the arterial alignments in this area here, there is a jog, a jog here. The proposed plan at Ocotillo Road and Rainbow Valley Road, this is Ocotillo Road, it shows this arterial alignment connecting at the Queen Creek and Perryville Road Alignment. So, in essence, a, a north, northwest arterial is being provided, the jog has been eliminated, and this, this meandering arterial is being provided, which provides an uninterrupted regional connection along the west side of Waterman Wash. And staff has determined that this proposed revision is, is appropriate, it provides for improved circulation in this area, and staff recommends approval of this roadway change. This is the final roadway change associated with this request, and this concludes staff's remarks on this planning area.
Questions of staff? Mr. Lacks, Commissioner Lacks?
Brett, my, my assumption in, in moving from...
Could you speak up, please?
Sorry. My assumption from, looking from going from rural residential to low-density residential, while not that significant, is, is so that the State Land Department can sort of maximize the parcel's potential, assuming as far as ultimately selling it.
Chairman Gelsner, Commissioner Lacks? Yes, the, the State Land Department is interested in achieving overall density to help position that for sale. At the same time, the staff was tasked with ensuring compatibility with surrounding developments. Staff and our consultant team both felt that this was an appropriate designation. It is a minor increase, but it still makes the state happy, and it makes the city happy, and the adjacent developments, the land use designations blends in with the adjacent developments sufficiently.
Questions of staff on this side? Commissioner Bay?
Uh, sorry. Uh, thank you, Chairman Gelsner. Brett, on this proposed roadway alignment, it actually severs Perryville Road, which previously was a, a major thoroughfare through that particular parcel. I guess I'm, I'm curious about what kind of impact that's gonna have in the future in terms of through traffic flows, heading north-south between Perryville, that's now gonna be routed to the east and then have to work their way back, looks like about a half a mile to get back to that major thoroughfare. So, could you comment on that a little bit for me?
Chairman Gelsner, members of the Commission, I will attempt to answer your question, and then I will ask that my colleagues would help me if they have anything to add. Essentially, one of the, one of the main reasons for this change that staff deemed appropriate was, you can see in this exhibit here, that you now have, you have a major wash in the area. Wash crossings are going to be difficult in, in this area, they're going to be expensive. This arterial provided a way to have a continuous arterial on the, on that side of the wash, and, and have a, to act as a, kind of a regional transportation corridor going that direction. And the, the existing alignment that we had, there were more, there were more jogs, and there wasn't a, there wasn't quite the immediate route, so, if, and, and I can defer to Kevin if he would like to add to that.
I, I want, I wanna ask Kevin a question, so have him come on. Cause I, I wanna follow up on this. I have some concerns, as Commissioner Bay stated, his... Is there any reason why Perryville Road couldn't, you know, proceed north past Ocatillo and then kind of, you know, go to the northeast and then tee into that road that's kind of basically RLO-ing the wash, so we have some continuity?
Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission, that is indeed exactly what the intent of this realignment was, and I think Brett hit on a lot of key points, but allow me to maybe build on to what he had built there as a foundation, is that he's absolutely right in terms of the traffic engineers talking. This, it's interesting that you point this out as an issue, because it was a key issue in the discussions of the land use planning, working with Goodyear staff, my senior traffic engineering staff, taking a look at it really made sense for continuity in the area. What I put on before you hear is the adopted circulation framework study from, at council as Commissioner Bay referenced, that when it left you all at the end of last year, it concluded with city council, and this as a practical matter was the net result, that when one began to look at the transportation or circulation network on the north and east side of the wash, running in this kind of 45-degree parallel fashion, began to make a lot of sense for continuity on the south and west side of the wash, Chairman Gelsner. And I think what you look at here in the advent of new land use planning, or, you know, updated if you will, the old plan shows this kind of circuitous road as Brett was referring to, but then it kind of just tees it at Rainbow, and then we kind of have this jog on Queen Creek. Well, it becomes, in our opinion, a much more efficient system to eliminate that jog and provide for a seamless connection between the two. It actually increases the efficiency of the system where you're eliminating the jog, and it achieves the same effect as if Perryville was there.
Kevin, I don't have a problem with that. What I do have is a problem, you know, going south on Perryville or coming north on Perryville, you know, at Ocatillo, and you have to make a right hand, you have to basically make a right turn, drive three-quarters, you know, by half a mile, and then make a very acute left turn to get back into the flow north. And what I'm asking, and my recommendation would be, is that Perryville Road be extended north of Ocatillo and curve to the right into there and have a T-intersection in whatever we're gonna call that other road. And I'm just saying, you know, if, I think council's gonna look at that, and I'm saying, you know, if you don't do that, I think you're gonna have problems down in the future, and I think we should plan for that.
I think that's...
Sorry, sorry. Actually, I'm not even opposed to having Perryville go straight through, and you could still have that parkway thoroughfare effect going over to the west, traveling west and south. But I don't, I don't believe that the development in the southern part of Perryville, roads should be, should have to suffer because of a parkway type of a roadway that's to the east of them. So either what Chairman Gelsner is recommending would take you maybe halfway into the parcel and jog to the east and connect, but my actual preference would be is that it remain the thoroughfare. And then that way, if you have the option to continue straight south, or you could then head over towards the wash.
Chairman Gelsner, Commissioner Bay, staff will take that under advisement, and we will return and report on October 17th.
Thank you. Kevin, I'm sorry, could you identify yourself just for the record?
I apologize.
That's my fault.
Kevin Kugler, RBF Consulting.
And your work retained by the city, right?
Yes.
And the state land department.
No, the city, not the state.
The city, right. Because it's no cost to the state land department, just so we all know on the record. Any other comments from the commission, or questions from the commission? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'm gonna close this hearing, and we're gonna move on to case number 077000007, state land department, planning area number six, and I'm gonna open the public hearing, and Brett, you're up for the last time on this side.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission. Planning Area Six, 5,300 acres, and the exhibit that you see before you, this is the existing general plan that we have here. You can see the entire area is rural residential. This shows the proposed land use designations, and it all shows Newland's Austraea proposal as well. So in this exhibit here, you can see both proposed general plan amendments that you are hearing this evening. So as you can see in this exhibit, Planning Area Six is located east of Newland's Austraea, south of Pecos Road, and you can see Austraea Mountain Regional Park in this area here. Planning Area Six shares a west and south boundary with Austraea. The property is contiguous to Goodyear's eastern municipal planning area boundary at the Litchfield Road Alignment, and it extends just south of Chandler Heights Road to the south. Planning Area Six was planned in conjunction with the Austraea Region Three planning efforts to ensure appropriate land use designations adjacent to the 303 corridor and to ensure adjacent appropriate designations with Newland's land use plans. You'll note that there's employment in higher-density land uses concentrated along the Loop 303 corridor, and these do complement the Austraea plans. There are community commercial centers identified to provide the needed convenience services to the neighborhoods within their proximity. The other item you'll note is that this is an exception to this application, and rural residential land uses remain adjacent to the Austraea Mountain Regional Park area and to the north of the OUT parcel to maintain that rural residential designation in that area. And that concludes staff's presentation. Staff's available to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? Commissioner Bay?
I'm gonna let him off the hook this time.
Commissioner Brooker?
Hey, Commissioner Miller?
I have one question, Brett. There's two OUT parcels here. One, you pointed in the north of this section, and one is in the south of the section budding up to Austraea Region Three. Are we working with the landowners? I assume we, I'm assuming we know who the landowners are, and do they just not want to participate in this, or what are the status of those two OUT parcels?
Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission, staff conducted a citizen review meeting with property owners. All property owners within 500 feet were noticed, and as we mentioned last meeting, we had about 60 people show up to that meeting. There were several residents who either owned property or lived in this OUT parcel here, and the residents who attended that meeting wanted staff to ensure that the adjacent properties would be compatible. They recommended rural residential land uses surrounding them. And as you can see here, staff accommodated them as best as we could. We both accommodated them to the north areas and also tried to ensure that we had lower-density residential. You do have some medium-density residential here, but we have a major regional center here, and you can see that as we radioed outward from that, the densities are decreasing. So the residents who attended the meeting discussed the planning efforts with us, and they were appreciative of the rural residential land uses that we showed adjacent to this particular area. There were no specific comments related to this area here.
Are both of those, are those parcels within the city limits, or are they county islands at this point in time?
This particular piece is a county island.
How about the piece on the south?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Any other question? I'm sorry?
This one is in the city limits.
Okay. Any other questions of the, of staff? Okay. Anybody from the public would like to make a comment concerning this case? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing on this. On the last four items for the record, at the next Planning Commission meeting on October 17th, we will take action on all four of these items. Okay, our next case is case number 077000003, and that is a general, major general plan amendment for Austraea Region Three. I'm gonna open the public hearing, and Farhad Tabasoli is, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. What you're seeing here on Elmo is Exhibit Eight of the packets that the applicant prepared for you. So I'll just highlight some of the major characteristics of this major general plan amendment as we go along. Generally, what you're seeing here is a 7,845-acre area, bounded north by Queen Creek Road. What you see here, further south is Patterson, but the bulk of this area is north of Riggs Road. Over here to the west is Perryville Road or 187th Avenue, and furthest east is Litchfield Road or 139th Avenue. Real quick, just to discuss the circulation, the arterial framework that you see on this exhibit is generally consistent with the South Goodyear circulation framework that you saw earlier. Again, the intent with the circulation here is to maximize the number of, well, I should say, where the intersections occur with two arterials, we wanted to keep that at 90-degree angles, so that's part of the reasoning behind this framework. And also to minimize the number of wash crossings along Waterman Wash to not only maintain the integrity of the wash, but to decrease expenses. The vast majority of the land use that's proposed here is low-density residential, and more specifically, it's just a little over 2,700 acres that you see here. Austraea Region Three, the general plan amendment, generally represents a decrease in the allowable density compared to what is existing. Much of the higher intensity and higher-density land uses you can see here are concentrated generally just north of the Chandler Heights Road and Queen Creek Road transition corridor here. As you can see, there are a number of medium, medium-high-density, high-density residential proposed here, as well as some mixed use planned here just south of Queen Creek Road. And incidentally, the property that you see here is not a part, this is under different ownership, this is approximately 20 acres. There's another property that's not a part, this is approximately five acres down here, Chandler Heights and Rainbow Valley Road. So the low-density is generally buffered by a network of permanent, permanent open spaces that you see here. And there's another high-density nucleus, so to speak, down here at, near the Bullard Road Alignment and Riggs Road. So as I mentioned, you're looking at, with this general plan amendment, a decrease in the overall density compared to what is existing. With that, I will conclude my comments, and Kevin can elaborate on some of the points that I covered. But at this point, I'll open it up to questions.
Questions of staff on this side?
I have a comment.
Question, Commissioner Broker?
I'd like to also see on functional impacts, a statement similar to the Phoenix-Goodyear Airport impact, but I'd like to see a statement, because we're getting a little closer now to Lufthansa's training field that is in that area, and I think we ought to note that, because I think at about this point, the southern end, you're going to start descending into Lufthansa's runway. So it's just an impact that I think should be noted.
We'll look into that.
I wholeheartedly support the vice chairman's suggestion, and I think we can just put it as a, you know, add it to the general stip of the aviation stip that talks about Goodyear Airport and Lufthansa, we should just add Lufthansa Training Facility that's farther south, so it's noted in there. Any other questions? I have one question. Commissioner Bay?
Sorry, I tried not to say anything, but I was just, I figured I'd ask. In this particular exhibit that you have of the Austraea Region Three, show the Waterman Wash and some boundaries that, they staircase through the Waterman Wash. And I guess my question is, are we, you've got some low-density designations going throughout there, are we looking at a floodplain here, or is this, you know, is this a hundred-year, 50-year? What's this boundary that we're looking at on the Waterman Wash?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Vale, attempt to answer this question. What I think you're seeing here is the area shaded in the lighter blue.
Yes.
That is the hundred-year floodplain.
Okay.
Okay. What you see here in the darker blue is the hundred-year, or I should say, the floodway.
Okay. So...
So much of what you see, the permanent open space that you see here, is in the floodway.
Okay, and rural residential is in the hundred-year floodway?
The rural residential here appears to be consistent with the boundaries of the floodplain, if this is what you're referring to right here.
Yeah, it is what I'm referring to.
Yeah, same thing up here.
Mr. Chairman, I might add to that. We can have no development whatsoever within the floodway. Floodplain, you could potentially, if you elevate, finish flow.
Okay.
But more importantly, I might want to add that staff is working with Newland communities with a consultant, and we're working with other major property owners in this area in developing what we call Waterman Wash Vision.
Mm-hmm.
To develop a cross-section that we want to preserve this as a natural corridor.
Okay.
And set some parameters for future development adjacent to the wash. The wash today is very broad, in some places it's wide as a quarter-mile.
Yeah.
It's so shallow. There's potential for narrowing that and doing some channelization, but also at the same time doing a natural-looking way. So staff is working on that now with the three order of commission. Later this year, early next year, a Waterman Wash plan is set parameters for that. To preserve the floodplains, maybe narrow them, but provide a natural open space area.
Okay, thank you very much. That makes me feel much better.
Can I, I just want to add, so that the, that land that's to the south and inside, you know, what you would call the inverted U of this planning area that Waterman Wash runs through, we're working with those landowners right now. We're on the aerial photography, there's a farm, a dairy farm.
Chairman, I guess inside the...
Yeah, inside the, yeah, inside the horseshoe.
Primary Magiera Plan Project.
Okay.
And we will be working with them, same as you asked. We are currently working with Newland, and we work with the other major developers. But the goals that we all develop under the same concept.
Wait, okay. Any other questions of staff? Okay, any comments from the public concerning this case? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and again, this, there will be no commission action tonight. Commission action will take place on October 17th. Thank you, Mr. Schmitz, for good outline. Okay, moving along. Case number 075000012, Cobblestone Creek Preliminary Platte. A request for the approval over preliminary plat for Cobblestone Creek, the subdivide approximately 12.75 acres into eight commercial lots located at the northwest corner of McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway in the Palm Valley Planned Area Development. And the applicant is Dennis Keough of Keough Engineering on behalf of SunCorps Development, and we are going to open the public hearing. And we are going to open the public hearing, and Anna will be giving us our first presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsler, members of the Commission. The aerial photo you are looking at shows the location of the Cobblestone Creek Preliminary Platte. The site is located at the northwest corner of McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway, and it is in Phase 8 of the Palm Valley Master Plan. Hopefully, you're able to see that okay. As you can see on the preliminary plat, it is a 12.75-acre site, planned to be subdivided into eight lots. These lots range from approximately one acre to more than 2.8 acres. The property is zoned as a final planned area development, subject to the general commercial zoning district, and the design guidelines for the Cobblestone Creek Commercial Center were administratively approved on April 2nd, 2007. Planned uses for this center include several retail shop buildings, drive-through restaurants, a bank, and convenience uses. Today, the property is currently vacant, as well as the properties surrounding the site. To the south and east, this is the north, the side of the site. To the south and east are more commercial centers, including near the proposed regional mall, as well as some other commercial centers. And then to the north and west, you see the RID canal easement. It's a hundred-foot RID canal easement. And then there will be some proposed subdivision housing development on that side. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat, subject to stipulations in the staff report, as it is consistent with the development permitted by the city's general plan, and it is consistent with the approved Palm Valley Planned Area Development. The lot sizes and configurations are consistent with the requirements of the city's zoning ordinance and the Palm Valley PAD development standards. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? Commissioner Bay?
Sorry, Anna, thank you very much for the presentation. This particular preliminary plat really is sort of difficult to see. But my question is, the streets that are to build according to the stipulations, the city's standards, are these going to be private streets, or are these going to be dedicated to the city? And then we end up maintaining them?
Chairman Gelsler, members of the Commission. The streets, SunCorps currently has a site plan in for these streets. They will be privately owned, drive aisles within the development.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions of staff? Questions of staff? I have, I just want to identify, I know Lot 1 is gonna be the car wash, convenience center, Lot 2 is gonna be the Shasta Pool. Can you elaborate on the other lots? Who's coming in to what lot, please?
Right now, oh, sorry, members of the Commission, Chairman Gelsler, members of the Commission. Right now, we do not have any site plans in as to what may go in the other lots. All of these, all the sites, all the lots in this area are required to submit their own site plans.
Okay, so, so other than Lot 1 and Lot 2, everything else is tentative?
Correct.
On this plan? Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Anybody from the public like to make comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will ask if there are any commission discussions, otherwise I'm gonna ask for a motion. Commission, does anybody want to talk about this item, anything concerning us? Okay, can I have a motion to recommend approval of this case, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of case 07-500-00012, the preliminary plat for Cobblestone Creek.
I have a motion from Commissioner Lax, and a second from Commissioner Loritano. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it unanimously. Next case. This is case 07-200-00019, the Airport Gateway at Goodyear Planned Area Development. This is a rezone. This is a public hearing to consider a request to rezone property from preliminary planned area development for industrial development to preliminary planned area development on 187 acres for mixed-use commercial and industrial development, and to create a final planned area development on 25 acres for the development of a Cancer Treatment Center of America Hospital, generally located at the northeast corner of Bullard Avenue and Van Buren Street. The applicant is Michael J. Curly for EJM Development Company. And on that note, I'm gonna open the public hearing and ask for the staff report from Karen Craver, please.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsler. Good evening, Commissioners. The subject property is stated is located at the corner of Bullard and Van Buren. It extends up to the I-10 freeway and over to the railroad tracks. It has a frontage to the ADAT facility on Van Buren, a small strip that will be developed as 143rd Avenue, and then continues over eastward to those old railroad tracks. As mentioned in the introduction, all of the property currently has a preliminary PAD zoning on it. And this was granted by the City Council in June of 1987. And to date, no activity has occurred on the property, but we think that's all gonna change pretty quickly. The land use plan, master land use plan that was submitted with the proposal, shows a mixture of regional retail to be located at the I-10, Bullard Avenue interchange that is about to get under construction. It also includes a retail parcel right down at the intersection, business park parcels scattered throughout the site, and a 25-acre hospital site, which will be located at that newly constructed 143rd Avenue and the westward extension of Fillmore. Perhaps you've heard about it. It's been in all the papers. The Cancer Treatment Centers of America has decided to come to Goodyear. We're very happy about that. Because the Cancer Treatment Center is so far along in their plans, we have actually a site plan that was submitted by them and has gone through preliminary review by staff. We are recommending that that parcel receive a final PAD designation with your recommendation and council's approval, and that the remainder of the parcel receive a preliminary PAD designation to go from the original PAD that was primarily just industrial development. And this PAD will provide for a mix of industrial, retail, and service opportunities. The property on the general plan is designated light industrial and community commercial. This mixed-use commercial and industrial development is in keeping with that general plan designation. The entire property is also designated through this PAD as a central business district within the boundaries of the City of Goodyear's redevelopment plan that was adopted a few years ago. The redevelopment plan follows the boundaries of what we today refer to as the employment corridor. It extends down further south from I-10 towards the airport and down around MC-85. We have standard stipulations that go with the PAD approval. We've established allowed uses and prohibited uses. We have a couple of stipulations in here that deal with the development agreements that are being worked on. They will ensure that the roadways and utilities for the Cancer Treatment Center are installed with the development of the hospital. And then we are looking forward to getting a development agreement on the remainder of the property that will ensure the development of the remaining roadways and utilities. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff at this point in time? Commissioner Bay?
Thank you, Chairman Gelsler. First, I just want to ask the questions. I guess it's more procedural than anything else. I don't think I've ever remembered us doing preliminary and a final all in, under one umbrella. Are we okay with that? How does that work?
We are, and I'm not sure if it coincided as far as your timing on the commission or not. Previously, we had the Australia Commons PAD. It's being developed by Evergreen DevCo south of Interstate 10 on the east side of Australia Parkway. A portion of that was ready for final PAD approval, and the remainder was not. So preliminary was granted on the remainder, so there is precedence for doing this.
Okay, all right, good. Well, I'm fine with that. Okay, well then, my, I have two questions, basically, two concerns. One is, I guess at some point, we're looking at providing a freeway pylon sign. I'm assuming that will come to us under a separate cover?
Yes, as depicted in the PAD, they are suggesting that there would be a pylon sign here, here, and here. The? Yes, the developer will be submitting a comprehensive sign package for the PAD, which will include special use permit application for one or all three of those pylon signs. And that comprehensive sign package will be brought back before you.
And then my second concern is actually the traffic signals. They're suggesting three traffic signals, two of which will be on Bullard Avenue. And I think my, my real concern at looking at Exhibit E, it indicates that one of the traffic signals to the north, I have no sense of distance here, but I recognize that we're building a Bullard interchange there. And I guess my concern is having too many traffic signals too close together, if you know what I'm saying, that would really stop the bottleneck, the flow of traffic.
Right.
So I guess my concern is that they're asking for one for the regional retail center and one for the Fillmore Street alignment. And it would seem to me it might be more advantageous to provide Fillmore Street to go up to the boundary, maybe a neandering point, and provide one traffic signal at that intersection that would serve both the regional retail center and the business park. So, but you can make me feel better if you tell me that there's enough distance between the traffic signals that's gonna be at the freeway and this one that they're proposing for the retail center.
Well, luckily, that won't be my decision to make. They will have to take that through an approval process with ADAT, because as you pointed out, there will be traffic signals that will be associated with the interchange itself and the egress and ingress onto the interstate. So there will need to be, you know, distance analysis conducted there as part of that. You know, and also you have to deal with where the access points are on the west side of Bullard Avenue. So that will all be studied, and will have to get permitted by people way above me.
So then, will we get something from a traffic engineer or ADAT or someone who, when we get our final pad for this, will we have that report to tell us?
They submitted a preliminary traffic analysis to us as part of this preliminary PAD submit, and that will be refined as it goes through the process and towards final PAD approval.
Okay, I'll be watching this part.
I'll count on it.
Other questions, Mr. Loritano? Commissioner Williams? Anybody?
Karen, let's go back to the pylon signs.
Okay.
I'm always in favor of pylon signs, but my concern is our, is there enough distance based on our ordinance? I thought we had a, I thought, I thought we had to have a, you know, 1,320 feet or something between every pylon sign.
I was thinking it was 1,000.
But I, you know, again.
But?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, if you recall, there was a specific standard within the ordinance that said that we 1,320 feet separation. However, Commission and Council, we amended those sections a year, year and a half ago to make them more guidelines.
Thank you.
Rather than hard standards, so that individual cases can be reviewed on their own merits.
Okay.
Within the context of all other approvals, but not as a hard standard, but as a guideline.
Got it, okay.
And again, would the use of it required for all freeway pylon signs?
Okay, next, follow-on question on the proposed sign package. This will be an entire sign package for the Airport Gateway Center, and not just a sign package for, the sign, the hospital will have its own separate sign package. Is that correct?
They have proposed signage as part of their site plan application. The comprehensive sign package will encompass the entire PAD, including the hospital.
The hospital will get a prominent spot on one of these pylon signs, or possibly more?
I think possibly more. But one of the great things about the Cancer Treatment Center coming in first is they will establish the criteria both for architecture and materials, landscaping, and signage for the entire development. So the sign package, yes, it will cover the entire site, but it will be guided by what is gonna be done by the Cancer Treatment Center, and that's a very good product, I can assure you.
Okay.
Any other, just one follow-up on the chairman's comments on the sign package. I believe some, some time back, we asked that staff would provide us with an update of, you know, every monument sign that's going along the freeway, so we could kind of monitor how that's going to look overall. And I would like to see that when we get to the, when we get to that point. I'd like to not just see how this fits with this particular parcel, but how is our freeway actually gonna look as we start adding three and four and five pylons?
And staff has started to do that, complete a file on where everything is and what it looks like and spacing and whatnot, so we can bring that back to you when the sign package comes through.
Any other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to come up and make a presentation and take comments?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Commission. For your record, I'm Scott McCoy with Earl Curling-Lagard, 3101 North Central, representing EJM Development Company. Fred Stiles is here in the audience from EJM Development Company. We also have a number of representatives from CTCI. David Ward of Gallagher and Kennedy, representing CTCI, and David Willett from CTCI, who will actually be the operations manager for the, for the hospital here in Goodyear. They'll be happy, I think, to answer any operational questions you might have about CTCI. I wanted to, first, before, I got too far down the road, and hopefully not being too obsequious, I want to thank Harvey Kraus and Bob Kuntz and Karen for their hard work on this. There was a pretty aggressive development timetable for the hospital in order for them to choose the Goodyear site. And in order to make that happen, Harvey and Bob and Karen literally moved heaven and earth to get this thing to the process, and we thank them, and Brian Dahlke in the City Managers' Office, and also Rorick and Sarah have been working extra hard to make sure that the development agreements, which are part of the stipulations, are finalized as we move forward to a certain council date. Just a couple of comments that, in reference to some comments made by the chairman and members of the Commission. Chairman Gelsler, I can assure you that in this application, there is no, we're not attempting to have any signs approved or pylons approved. They're just shown on the site plan and on the exhibits merely demonstrative. There'll be a separate application for a comprehensive sign package that will come, that will be approved by the city and the regulatory body. And then, in addition to that, the Bullard Avenue, to your comments, Chairman Bay, that will be a six-lane major arterial. The EJM will be required to install three lanes on the east side of Bullard. The traffic signals will be up to the city standards. I think it's roughly, and I don't know the exact footage, but they're required to be roughly a quarter-mile apart, and so the city engineer will assure that that happens. So we're not asking for anything above and beyond what the city ordinarily requires with respect to traffic signals. Be more than happy to answer any questions. Again, the representatives of CTCI are here. The anticipated opening date or certificate of occupancy for the hospital is December, end of December of 2008. So I know the CTCI is poised to move as quickly as possible their construction documents, obtaining their building permits, and get this, this facility up and underway. obtaining their building permits, and get this facility up and underway. So happy to answer any questions asked. If you follow your staff's recommendation, forward a favorable recommendation to the council.
Can you get us another hospital?
Well, we could certainly try.
Get the Cleveland Clinic to follow the Indians out here. Get the facility up.
Any other, Commissioner Williams, any other?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anybody, any other questions?
No.
Questions of the applicant? Questions of the applicant? As chairman, I take it on my prerogative to strongly recommend that you hire an excellent sign company, and I am all in favor of freeway pylon signs, but some of our city council people are not.
We appreciate that.
Okay? So the better the design, and if you have the name Goodyear in it, that even makes it even better. So I just, you're forewarned. We will recommend them, and we will most probably, you know, unanimously approve this. I can't speak right yet for the commissioners, but I'm sure that I think that's the way it's going. But when the sign package comes up, there are some people on this commission who do have, you know, concerns on the way signs look, and I strongly advise you to get the best and brightest sign people that you can have working on it if you want to get everything that you see here.
Appreciate that suggestion.
Any other comments, questions in that case?
Just one comment. I want to welcome the Cancer Treatment Center to Goodyear, and I know that you've met everybody on staff just to make this happen, so I know you know everyone else here. So on behalf of the commission, and I know this is typically the chairman's role, but we want to say thank you for picking Goodyear, and we'll do everything we can to help you, but we do have standards that we want to do.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And on that note, I'm gonna close the public hearing, if I hadn't already. I'm gonna ask for a motion on the case, the Goodyear Airport Gateway, a Goodyear Planned Area Development rezone, and final PAD and preliminary PAD.
Chairman Gelsner, I would like to request that the commission approve case number 07-200-00019, with all the stipulations that are provided.
I second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Bay and a second from Commissioner Miller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it, welcome to Goodyear, or at least welcome for the planning commission. And on that note, ladies and gentlemen, staff communications. Harvey, it's good to see you back.
Thank you. It's good to be back.
We heard for you, but it's good to see you back.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate all the support. Our next regular meeting is October 17th. We'll be meeting at the Star Point in Estrella, 7:00. We have a couple, I think we have one rezoning and a plat on the agenda, too. So...
Are we gonna, are we gonna have a tour, or are we gonna have a standard meeting? Are we gonna meet for dinner, or are we just gonna meet up there?
[laughing]
Well, we do have one rezoning. In fact, we talked, we were talking about that, so we probably will have a standard meeting, we'll meet for dinner, and we have a tour up here of the Levinson Property, 160, and then we'll go, well, you have to eat up here and then go down to the Stramont Range. So probably...
We have one restaurant.
Do you want to eat there? It's fine. I mean, it's fine, we've eaten there before.
Well, they changed it.
Oh, is there?
There's one.
Is it? That's fine, if you want to try that.
I never make dinner anyway.
Is there anything else? That's all we have.
Anything, comment on the awards, say one?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Commissioner Bay and Joe, myself, and Brian Dawkey attended the Valley Forward banquet Saturday night, and the city received a award of merit for its city center-specific area plan, which is very nice. And we're also, we'll be receiving, I guess it's not a secret anymore, we've got a letter, so I guess it's official, at the upcoming Arizona Planning Association Conference, we'll also be receiving an award for best plan for our city center, too. So I think several of you signed up for that, so that'll be, there'll be at the banquet that we'll be receiving an award on that, too. There was a lot of competition this year, so I felt really good about that.
Could the chairman remind, I want to remind two things. One, I want to remind the commissioners to turn in your packets so that we don't have to redistribute these plans again, so that they just come back to us for the next time. And then...
Do you want us to keep them? Do you probably want?
Do I keep the books?
Do you want us to keep them? Okay, we will, all right, then. Let me change my recommendation. Please, please keep the general plan amendment and all the paperwork, and you'll just receive any changes that are appropriate for the next meeting. And then the second thing is, if you're not gonna make the tour, please let the commission know that you are not going to be here. Sometimes we've been having some problems. One of the commissioners was late, missed the tour. He shall remain nameless. Turn left without him. And on that case, I'm gonna call for the motion to adjourn.